I need a motion to close private session, please.
Move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to welcome you to the March Regular Board Meeting. At the good notice of this meeting was advertised in the Ezra Park Press and the Beacon on January 4th, 2017, and by posting the notice at Porco River Post Office and Lenoka Harbor Post Office, filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Law. Please join me in saluting the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Sorry, on page eighteen, I need a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session number one held on February 21st, 2017.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain, I was absent. I need a motion that the board approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on February 21st, 2017.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain. Need a motion that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting and the appropriate attachments held on February 21st, 2017.
Move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain. I need a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session number two held on February 21st, 2017.
Move.
Roll call.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain. Now I'd like to provide an opportunity for the attorney's report.
Nothing further to report this time.
Student representative comments, would like to go first.
I will.
Kylie?
The freshmen, they're holding Rent Senior on May 4th. Sophomores, Ms. Taskin and the officers are still selling chairs and seat pads, so see Ms. Taskin or any of the officers if you guys would like one. June 5th and 6th is the speedball tournament this year. Commencement flowers are to be sold at the high school and middle school graduations. Twenty percent profit off of every boutique sold. Junior prom is going to be held on May 12th. The senior raffle ticket sales are still going on. For executive board, the talent show is on February 27th, and it was a huge success. On February 15th, it was eighth grade orientation, and that was also a huge success. March 10th is red night out, and that was a huge success. March 17th through 18th is the booster's gift auction. Bum, juniors will report to the gym and wear their maroon volunteer shirt. April 19th was, is going to be the SGA meeting. Elections are going to be April 24th and May 8th is election signups. May 8th is the election meeting in W-108. May 15th and May 19th is the campaigning. And May 19th will be elections for the officers. May 10th will be the SGA meeting. Mr. Lacey is in May on the 25th in the auditorium for, at six o'clock, and it's five dollars at the door. And we have a new event this year that we're stressing, and it's May 22nd through the 26th, which is Cardinal Navy Battles. We're very excited for that, so we want the school to really get involved. We have Cardinal Navy teams. For the Cardinal team, the leaders would be Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Supretta, and those are freshmen and juniors. And then the teachers involved are the last names A through K. And Navy team, the leaders is Ms. Taskin and Dipala, and those are sophomores and seniors, and last names L through Z. And the next SGA meeting is May 31st.
Thanks Kylie. Jackman?
Emily has always been an ideal student who pushes herself to do the best she can be by undertaking classes of advanced placement, honors, and collegiate level capacity. Emily's transcript is a true reflection of her dedication and work ethic as she maintains a cumulative GPA of 4.05 while being ranked 56 out of 305 students. Along with her rigorous course load, Emily participates in varsity track and varsity soccer. She has a reputation of being an exemplary team player and is loved by her coaches and teammates. She's also a member of the National Honor Society and is an active member in the environmental club, ADA, and the art club. Emily somehow finds time for a part-time job, and she volunteers for runs the pines for canines and at the USCFA Soccer Academy. Emily plans to capitalize on her love of animals to pursue a career in veterinary medicine at a four-year college. Emily is an inquisential Lacey student, hardworking, dedicated, caring, and prideful. This is why Emily Dorsey is marked on San Yaro.
Is that all you had? Jackman?
Yep.
Okay, thank you ladies. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. or Mr. Wigley.
I like that.
Promoted you again.
I can heal everyone. I'd just like to first thank our representatives. It's great to hear all the good things. You guys are busy, 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 and it's a lot of positive energy still in the high school. In regards to just that, it's good to see this crowd again come to a board meeting in support of our students' achievements, whether it be academic, athletic, or in our co-creco activities. So I think it's important we continue to do this. It's going to be a long meeting tonight. We have a presentation after our recognitions for our achievement report. So when we do see the end of that part, portion, we will give a little flag up. Some people may want to go home and do their homework. I know a lot of parents may want to stay around and see that presentation, but I think some of our, maybe our student athletes, depending on what time it is, may shortly have some extra time to sleep in tomorrow. So we'll be quiet about that too.
With a minute.
Okay. Without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brandis, who will be introducing our Students of the Month, our state champion high school girls bowling team, and our wrestling accomplishments and milestones this season. Mr. Brandis.
Thank you, Mr. Wigley and the Board of Education. I do enjoy this every month, being able to celebrate the accomplishments of our students and our student athletes. First, I would like to recognize the Senior of the Month, Alexia Bove. Come on down. Congratulations, and we're going to watch a brief video of her accomplishment. Hello, I'm here with Senior of the Month, Alexia Bove. Congratulations. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Michael McClung.
Hi, I'm Mike McClung, here with Alexia Bove, March Senior of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to start by talking about some of the things you do both inside and outside school?
Sure, I was captain of the winter track team, and I'm captain of the lacrosse team. And outside of school, I volunteer at volleyball for special needs children.
That's awesome. Anything else?
I do art a lot too, on the art club.
There you go, I didn't mean to cut you off there, I'm sorry about that. So for college, you know what you're doing yet?
I want to go to the University of Vermont.
What for?
Biochemistry.
That's awesome. So is there a teacher here at the school that has had an impact on you?
Definitely Mr. Romeo. He's really understanding when it comes to not having enough time to do stuff, and he taught me a lot.
Hi, my name is Mr. Romeo. It's my pleasure to congratulate Alexia Bove for being the March Student of the Month at Lacey High School. Where does Cameron describe how great Lacey is academically? She is a history all-star in AP US History. In my eight years of teaching AP History, I have barely met someone who's been so dedicated, so intellectual, and so amazing in understanding how history connects throughout time. Alexia, congratulations, as well deserved.
Next, I'd like to celebrate the Senior of the Month, Justin Frazee, to join us down here to celebrate his accomplishments. Bit of a family affair with his family here and his sister. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Watch his accomplishments.
He's a great guy. Thank you very much. Congratulations again.
Sorry. Wrong cut spot.
Hello, this is Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacey Township High School. I'm here to congratulate Justin Frazee. And here to celebrate his accomplishments is Evan O'Wan.
Hello, Evan O'Wan, alongside Justin Frazee, the March Senior of the Month. How are you, Justin?
Good, how are you today?
I'm doing well. So congratulations first of all.
Hi.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what you're involved with inside the school?
So right now, I'm the president of FBLA, DECA, and Computer Club, and I'm currently playing tennis.
What about DECA, where are you going in California? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, really excited about that. We actually, me and my friend Brandon, we placed first at the regional round, and then we had the opportunity to go to state, so we should be one for competitive events. So that's pretty, pretty exciting stuff.
Fair present. So can you explain a little bit what DECA is?
DECA is Distributive Educations Club of America. And basically what you do is you get to compete at like different business events and category. We actually did finance, so basically what we do.
Well, that's awesome. So can you talk a bit, a little bit about like what teachers, things that have impacted on you?
Without a doubt, definitely Mr. Cuzon. He has the ability to teach us stuff in the classroom, but also teaches things about life and shaping us to the kids to make us the best that we can be.
Congratulations to Justin, the student of the month. He's well deserved. If I had to say something about Justin, he just runs on rocket fuel. Regardless of what he's a part of, he always gives 110%, and whether he wanted to or not, he's just an outstanding student. And a really more important, he's just really, just an outstanding person. And I'm glad I've been able to work with him over the last four years in STEM, and I can't think of a more deserving person. Do you know where you're going for college yet?
Looking at Penn State right now.
Penn State, and what would you like to study?
Veriflant, whatever.
Best of luck, it looks like you're doing a great job here. So congratulations again on winning student of the month.
Thank you.
Nice. We'd like to also recognize the parents of Justin Frazee as a well-deserved honor. Along with the parents of Alexia Bove as well. Congratulations. That concludes our Senior of the Month, well said. We're also going to, a couple months ago, we got the unique opportunity to recognize one of our state championship athletic teams, which was a softball team last spring. And tonight, we're also able to acknowledge another program that won a state championship. Not only, you know, to win a state championship, it takes something special. Not only having, you know, tremendous athletes that are gifted and work hard, but just a real great group of individuals as well. So to talk more about that and congratulate them is our South Jersey Group Three State Championship Bowling Team. And Coach Mahar, please come down and celebrate their accomplishments. Coach Mahar is going to introduce the individuals.
All right, before we bring up the members of the girls bowling team, just a few things in case you didn't know them already. This team was a very, very special team. They got along very well. It's probably one of the best group of young ladies that I have ever coached on any team in, in any sport, in any school. And I believe that's a tribute to their parents. So I would like to give their parents a round of applause for doing such a great job raising these fine young ladies. And before we bring them up, I just, we, we ended up with a record of 38 and 7, which is pretty much flip-flop from last year and the year before. We set or broke 27 school records this year. So they have a, a job to do next year trying to match that. And they're, according to the Jersey Orange Blog, we ended up number 11 in the state of New Jersey. So that's a pretty awesome, awesome feat by these young ladies this year. We are going to call up the members of the varsity squad first in alphabetical order. Autumn Laird. Julia Miro. Claudia Schreier. Liz Schreier.
Congratulations.
Samantha Tremly. Sierra Baker. Megan Fitzgerald. Megan Hennaway. Angela Laforja. And Morgan Lima.
Along with our girls bowling team, I want to also recognize our men's bowling team, also won B-South this year, which is also an amazing accomplishment in itself. Not state champs, but B-South champs, which is also a great accomplishment as well. Moving on in wrestling, it's a team sport and also individualized. Also like wrestling. And our men's wrestling program had a remarkable season, one of the best seasons in about a decade and a half. And it certainly goes to all the hard work of Coach Pfister and his boys that he worked all season with. Wrestling isn't just certainly a, you know, a couple months. It's a year-round that these boys work hard, training to do the best they can within the season. Four boys in particular had remarkable seasons that finished, allowed them to qualify states down at Atlantic City. And to talk a little bit more about them and their accomplishment, Coach Pfister. Congratulations to both.
As Mr. Brandis stated, the wrestling team experienced a pretty high level of success this year. And that is directly corresponded to the four young men that are here tonight, their leadership, and their hard work was contagious throughout the team. And their hard work and their commitment certainly resulted in their tremendous individual successes this season. And what's exciting, but as we bring three of them back, you know, so the future is very, very bright. These four boys here today, all qualified for the New Jersey State Tournament. That is the only state tournament in the state of New Jersey. It is not broken up into sections or groups. So it is every wrestler from High Point to Cape May and everybody in between. It's only, it's one of maybe three states in the entire country that wrestle to a true state championship. It's one of the toughest wrestling tournaments in, in New Jersey in particular, is one of the toughest wrestling states in the country. If you look at the number of NCAA qualifiers at this, at next weekend's NCAA tournament, New Jersey has the second highest number of Division One national qualifiers competing in the country. So these boys are top of, top of the top here. We have four state qualifiers, which tied the school record for number of state qualifiers ever. We had four state qualifiers in 1998, four state qualifiers in 1999. And these four young men are the third time in Lacey history to have four individuals qualify for the state tournament. First of all, we have Luke Moynihan, who finished in the top 24 in the state of New Jersey. Okay? Who goes to the Mates Academy, who goes to the Mates Academy and carries a GPA of 4.0. We have Luke Garthier, who also finished top 24 in the state of New Jersey. Who also carries a 4.0 GPA.
Luke, come on down. Luke, come on down.
These young men are both juniors, and will be back next year. We'll be saying goodbye, unfortunately, to one senior. A long line of the Garrity family has finally come to an end. Sad, sad day for Lacey Wrestling. The third and final Garrity will be graduating. Senior Matt Garrity, 160-pounder, region runner-up. Lost in the round of 12 at the state tournament, one win away from the podium. And he also broke the school record this year for most career wins, with 110 career wins. Senior Matt Garrity. I don't know how long his record will last, however. You've got a couple young guns hot on your trail. Tremendous accomplishment. And finally, we crown a state place winner this year. Sophomore Hunter Gutierrez is a two-time district champion, a region champion this year, and fifth in the state of New Jersey at 106 pounds. He's only a sophomore. And that's Hunter Gutierrez, who has a 4.25 GPA.
Michael McCollough, to congratulate the individuals in the wrestling team. Much love, congratulations. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Suboko, Mill Pond Principal, down to introduce and recognize the accomplishments of a famous author, a bright star in Lacey, and just a class act. He has some really kind words here to say. So, Mr. Suboko.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wigley and Board of Education members, for accepting my request to honor and recognize one of Mill Pond School's finest young ladies. I'd like to invite Zoe Rose Madalena to the podium, please. Zoe Madalena is an 11-year-old, 11-year-old, sixth-grade student in Mill Pond. She likes softball, spending time with her family, and she is a writer. In fact, she is already a published author of numerous books and poetry. Zoe's love of writing started at a very young age. She published her first 50-page book during her year in kindergarten. Since then, writing has become Zoe's natural way to express herself. She finds writing to be her best way to process her emotions and process how she feels about things she observes in life. Some grown-up authors still are searching for their own literary voice, but Zoe has found hers at just over a decade old. A common theme in Zoe's works is the human spirit. More specifically, Zoe's works often revolve around a protagonist who is the underdog facing obstacles in life. Her plots explore her character's journey of tackling these obstacles. In her most recent book, Ocean's Hope, her characters confront complex adolescent issues like acceptance, friendship, and serious illness. Zoe's main characters always rise above their challenges. And most importantly, they use what they learn from their experiences to help others. And helping others is exactly what Zoe is doing when she writes. All proceeds from the sale of Ocean's Hope will be donated to St. Jude's Children's Center. She not only empowers herself, but she also empowers other children her age to explore writing and reading. Zoe finds inspiration to write in a variety of places. One source she often finds inspiration is in her mother. Mrs. Madalena is a teacher of students with disabilities. She and Zoe, Zoe find much inspiration from children from different backgrounds, and they learn about how they rise above their challenges in life to accomplish their goals. The pages of Zoe's books celebrate the beautiful human spirit. Zoe also finds inspiration from her sixth-grade English-language arts teacher, Mrs. Anzalone. Mrs. Anzalone is here tonight in support of Zoe and continues that support each day in the classroom as Zoe's mentor. Mrs. Anzalone, would you please rise to be acknowledged? At this time, I'd also like to recognize Zoe's parents and grandparents who are here today and every day to support their Zoe. Would you please rise for an acknowledgement? Zoe, your Mill Pond family is also so proud of you and your literary accomplishments. You are a young lady who is certainly improving the world with your gift of writing. I proudly present you with this Mill Pond Young Author Certificate of Accomplishment. Congratulations, and please, don't stop sharing your gift with the world.
Mr. Suboko. Mr. Suboko, can you tell us where we can buy the book?
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe, or maybe Zoe can tell us.
Yeah, let Zoe tell us.
Have Zoe tell us.
Little commercial. This is your first commercial, right here.
Hi, I'm Zoe. If you would like to buy my book called Ocean's Hope, you can find it on Lulu.com. It's just under $4.
Zoe, say it one more time, where can we buy it?
Lulu.com, it's just under $4. L-U-L-U dot com.
L-U-L-U dot com. That's L-U-L-U dot com. That's L-U-L-U dot com.
We're going to begin our achievement presentation, so I know there might be some homework children in the audience that may want to depart. We'll give you about 30 seconds. I know those 400s are going home to maintain them.
You're going to have an extra day, right?
Mr. Wigley.
A little extra, little extra day.
Jackie Frazee, we give her a little talk about her birthday.
She set, you set up the.
I was going to mention my.
Yeah, well, no, it's the same women come back, but at least we get.
Congratulations.
That was very impressive. Congratulations.
Justin, congratulations. Are you going to kick? You going to kick in Penn State?
Penn State. So the big boy they had kicking last year, man.
It's alright. See you, Branch. Take care of the night.
Oh, dude. Nice.
Take care. Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, boys. Nice work on the 4-0.
4.2, don't get it. That's 4.2 right there. Good stuff. Good stuff.
Congratulations.
Hey, congratulations. Congrats. Congrats. Hey, close, that's what 160 pounds is.
Yeah. We were there once. We were there once.
No, 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 no. Congratulations. Nice job.
This is good to on TV. Television stars.
Before we start our presentation, I do want Jackie Frazee to go through her accomplishments in organizing Career Day. She has a couple of words to say.
So this year, in September, Mr. Bannon tasked me with something, coming up with three different goals I want to accomplish this year as student government president. And one of them was creating a career and job fair for students to come from all over the county to get different options in exploring different careers and potentially finding summer employment. So Ms. Chigaron, who's here tonight, the guidance supervisor, took on the project with me and we worked really hard all year to put this event together which was held on March 1st. We had over 60 businesses represented at the night and we had hundreds of students come through. Some people were employed and others found direction in which careers they want to take. And we are so thankful for how it turned out and everyone that supported it. And we are looking forward to next year, different ways to improve it and to continue the tradition with our first Career Day this year and to continue it in the future.
Great job.
Great work.
Thank you. We need about 100 Jackies to replace the one of her next year for the work she does. I would invite the board to come up as the audience if you're going to want to have rubberneck there the whole time watching this. Just do it here. I'll do it there. I should never invite them to leave. Next year, nobody leaves, just say no. Lock them doors. Alright. You ready? Alright. So, I'm fortunate to be in Lacey my eighth month. I counted the month because everyone gets a little more exciting as we head into budget season and preparing for next year. But we're also at a point where we've collected data from the past year or so and we're ready to present our academic achievement and some of the exciting things that are happening academically in the district. So Dr. Clark and I are going to present, are going to present tonight a series of slides. We're going to start with something that I learned, we should be reading probably and we may be doing that at every board meeting because these are the words that sometimes get forgotten in the shuffle. And when I see the students that were here today, whether we like it or not, or they don't know it, if it's osmosis, they live and breathe this. And this is the mission that we all should endure to. And I think that sometimes our words are lost because they're in a document. But this is part of our strategic plan. These are the words that we're living by throughout the plan. So I think it's important to read them. I may take the opportunity on occasion to read them out loud at a meeting and remind people of why we're here and what our jobs are and how important it is to see the students that benefit from all the hard work of our teachers and support from our administrators really are following a plan. And we're not just throwing confetti in the air and we hope it lands where we want it to. So it's a, it's a, it's a good, solid start. This is based, we had a meeting on October the 18th for a revisit of our first year of the strategic plan which was well received, but we are going to do a follow-up in June to measure where we, what we achieved in the first year as we gear up for year two. So we're going to keep that pattern of October and June so that the plan stays alive. We do things every day that adhere to the plan and make sure that we're, we're sharing the accomplishments, the challenges, and the revisions with you. I think that's important also. Alright. So we're going to go through a couple of slides just to get us caught up on where we're at in regards to the plan, but also how it ties into student achievement. High-impact teaching supports and resources in 21st century skills. For some people, they're buzzwords, they're cliche, they hear them here, they hear, but we've endeared to them and we have the supports to back up that we're reaching our achievement and our goals in regard to that. Under New Jersey Achievement Coach Is Grant from NJ DOE, we have trained and turnkeyed a group of teachers that are on cutting-edge best practices and they are reteaching to their peers for a continuous professional development, which is the benefit of our students. We are retooling what is working with interventions and instruction to reflect best practices and implementing them as, as we can inclusively, not just because we think they're good because they're research and evidence-based. There's constant connections and the infusion of practical practices across the board. We were trying to continually improve our skills of our students with technology, applications, so that our graduates now and in the future are prepared. Examples of that from our youngest to oldest, Ready Gen, Envisions, our academies, our STEM program, and our continuing expansion through OCC. So I think that's important to, to continue. Access, communications, and responsibility. We continue to expand our STEM program, which I think is another marquee program. Our communications with our students and access to web tools. The one-to-one initiative at the high school, it's not commonplace across districts and it is really given and provided our students an edge as we kind of continually learn and get the learning curve going with that. Weekly communications and looking at a one-access portal for updating all of our technology together. Also, we're looking at improving our web presence, our social media presence, and our technology for our student learning management system, which will be a platform as we get to roll some of those items out later in the spring that are really cutting-edge, which I'm fortunate enough to actually work on myself and testimony that really is what, how students are learning in the future, especially in higher end. So we as learners also are doing our own professional development because we're going to stand there, we are not know-it-alls. We're learners too, and we are like sponges and we love it. That's why we're here, or we could be doing something else. So we're endeared to it, we believe in our cause, and I think that's the responsibility we carry as educators, caring for our children and supporting our staff along the way. Relationships, stakeholder involvement, engagement, and partnerships. We're trying to streamline information again through technology. We're working with our community, the rec department, our schools and our facilities, making sure that our parents know when our buildings are open, access, availability of, for our students to be here. We're also looking at expanding our outreach to more family events. And if you look at what they're doing, the elementary schools just in general on a weekly basis, there's an event everywhere, one or two a week, trying to bring the community in. I think that's spectacular. And I will talk about Red Night Out a little later, and that's just an example of engaging the community on a very positive way. I was at Chest Night, I remember at Fork and River, and there were plenty of the big giant chest pieces. I thought that was really neat. But the engagement of bringing the families and parents into the schools is still very, very important. So we're going to continue to promote our clubs, our partnerships in the community, and build that positive atmosphere. And that starts from kindergarten right through 12th grade. Through our finance, we're still establishing our, we have established our priorities on this budget, future budgets, and we are working with fidelity to make sure that we are being as conscientious as possible. We're taking action that's logical and sequential. And I must applaud the board, Mr. DeGeorge, for their efforts in the budget planning process and their support along the way and understanding the challenges that we face. And we're not alone, many, many districts across the state are facing too. So we're working efficiently as best we can to create that balance and capital projects that are sound and fundamental and built to help our students. I think it's also important that we're looking at alternative revenues, whether it be grants and/or opportunities outside of possibly educational foundations and other funding sources as we're applying actually as an international school to possibly take tuition students here, which could be of great benefit to the district. Okay. Statewide Assessment Program. So 28 years in teaching, when I signed up to be a teacher way back when, I didn't know Park was going to exist. But back then, it was, I think it was HSPT or HSPA was just coming in. So, and as a teacher, my connection to it was a little different. Now, I've grown through and I've seen assessment change over almost three decades. I understand it, and I understand the purpose of it. There's a lot of questions and sometimes some, some pushback, understood. Dissension's a good thing. But, we at Lacey are employed by the board, but we work for the state of New Jersey. So I'm endeared to this as much as I am anything else on my job responsibilities. And it's important, and I'm bought in because I get it. And I've broken down the standards, the common core, I've seen the assessments. I've seen the Park assessment aligned with the SAT, the new SAT, and the benefits of participating. So I think that that's important as we go, go through that. Assessing is, is part of the learning module. We have to be able to measure our students so that we compare, prepare our teachers and get feedback because it's not a shot in the dark. And we are aligning our curriculum and our instruction to standards, so we have to assess to them at all levels and at different levels. The questions are how we're doing it. And there's always those questions, and they're good questions, but they're never, ever, ever going to go away because once this model is complete, there'll be another model. And we need to endure to whatever's there because that's our responsibility. And we want our kids to succeed. And we won't compare them to themselves improving all the time, not necessarily the rest of the world, and we're working on that. I think that's really, really important. Anything less than a sincere effort on our behalf negates the purpose why we're here. So our roles are important as facilitators, supporters, but we also want to see that group of children that were here today that are 4.0s not be jeopardized for not taking a test or not believing that it's important. Because my son, I'll give you an example, so he's number 14 in his class, well over 400, and he was in AP English and he could have waived the park. And he says, "I'm taking it because I wanted, I heard it'll help me on my SAT." He took the new version of it. So it was a practice test for him, and he knocked it out of the park. Well, he didn't have to take the test because he met the waiver requirement. He made a choice for himself because he wants the better himself. He didn't, he wasn't politicized. So I think that's important when we look, because I have an opinion of everything, but my opinion is solely based on my dedication to my role and the role that I support of our administration, our teachers, and especially our learners. So the debate over assessment really is not a debate. It's personal on our part. We've got to support it though, and it's not personal. So just know that as you see this data and, and work with us on that. And if you have questions afterwards, I'm sure we can answer. I'm going to have Dr. Clark now go through some of our, our data, which is going to be some charts and graphs and give you some explanations.
I thought my pointer was going to work, but apparently it's going to shoot right back at me, so. They're not going to follow along on the graphs, yes. Okay. So as Mr. Wigley said, we're going to talk about some data now. So what does our data look like? And even though we're going to start with the New Jersey statewide assessment program, that's not the only assessment that we administer in Lacey. We administer local assessments, which we'll talk about a little bit later, and we'll talk about some of that data as well. But for this year, 2016 results provide the first opportunity for us to compare our results to what we did back in 2015. I'm going to throw in some cautionary statements in there just to help you understand what, what it really means. So Park performance levels. When Park initially arrived in New Jersey, these levels were relatively new to us in, in terms of how we look at scale scores. You know, we were used to terminology like partially proficient, proficient, and advanced proficient. And that all changed when Park arrived. Now, I'm not going to say that that terminology went away because we still administer, the, the state still asks us to administer the New Jersey Ask Science, and so that terminology still exists. It also exists with the New Jersey Biology Competency Test, which we'll talk about as well. So when we look at the levels, there are five, and you're going to see this over and over again as we go through our graphs. But one of the things that I did want to point out is that Park did publish an important document that really helped us understand what these levels might mean in terms of college and career readiness. And so what this document, the information that this document provided us is that a grade 11 student who achieves a threshold score for Level 4, meeting grade level expectations on the grade 11 Park ELA or the math test, and when I say math, I mean Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II, that student has earned the determination that he or she is college and/or career-ready. That's a grade 11 student taking the grade 11 test. So any student who achieves that Level 4, that tells us that that student is on track for college and career readiness. So I'm just trying to help you make some meaning about what the data means. So what is the meaning of a college and career-ready determination? It means that students have demonstrated the academic knowledge, the skills, the practices necessary to enter directly into college or the workforce, meaning that those students are ready to tackle college and career readiness, college specifically, not having to take remedial courses. So this information is really, really important, not only to us, not only to what our data looks like, but it's really, really important to you as parents and to students as well. Again, not the only assessment, because when we talk about assessment, we talk about success, we talk about multiple measures. And so that's going to come into play as we talk about the other assessments in today's presentation. Yes. Okay. So let's start with participation because that is a huge topic. And as you all know, it's been a topic in, in the media, it's been a topic in Facebook, it's been a topic in Twitter. And participation for us, we struggled in 2015. But I'm happy to report, as you can see by this graph, that if we compare our 2016 participation rate to our 2015 participation rate, we're making huge improvements. We have made huge improvements. So for example, especially at the middle school and the high school, the percent of increase at the middle school is 25.6, 25.6% more students participated in the park. And at the high school, 31.4% more students participated. You don't see those gains as much at the elementaries because our participation was not that bad. And when I say not that bad, that was good, but it's not great. And so as we prepare to participate in the park this spring, we ask for your assistance in helping these numbers improve because it, it does provide valuable information regardless of whether or not we're using it as a graduation requirement. It just simply provides valuable information because we're talking about rigor. By the way, no, no, you can stay there. By the way, I, I wanted to mention that we do have a Park Night scheduled. We will be making an automated call. Not tonight, it's such a different automated call. But that's Tuesday, March 21st. That's going to take place at 6:30 PM at the middle. we ask for your assistance in helping these numbers improve. Because it does provide valuable information, regardless of whether or not we're using it as a graduation requirement. It just simply provides valuable information because we're talking about rigor. By the way, no, no, you can stay there. By the way, I wanted to mention that we do have a Park Night scheduled. We will be making an automated call. But, that's Tuesday, March 21st. That's going to take place at 6:30 PM at the middle school. We will be sending out an automated call. It's already on our website. So, we encourage you to join us, even if right now you're sitting there skeptical about the Park and wondering if, you know, maybe the hype is true or perhaps you might get something out of tonight's presentation and say, you know, "I want to know more." And so, we invite you on March 21st to join us. All right, so, let's look at some data. So, the first slide is taking a look at our English Language Arts performance in grades 3 through 8. The next slide will cover high school. And here, we're comparing 2016 data to 2015 data. And here's my cautionary statement. Because that participation rate was so much higher, we may experience some fluctuations. The data may be slightly skewed because we had so many more students participating. But, despite that, the boxes that are shaded in blue, and I think you can see that, right? The boxes that are shaded in blue point out some bright spots for us in that our students are performing better than they did in 2015 in Level 3, particularly in Level 4 and in Level 5. So, we really like the looks of that slide. And we're going to be very interested in seeing how our students do on the Park this spring. And then, we'll add that third column to see how we compare to 2016. The next slide is English Language Arts Performance in Grades 9 through 12, again, comparing our 2016 data to our 2015 data. We have some blue shaded boxes there where we're seeing some bright spots in Levels 3, Level 4, and Level 5. All right, so, now let's take a look at our data as it compares to the state. So, how did LACI do compared to the rest of the students who participated in the Park at the state level? So, again, this is English Language Arts, grades 3 through 8. And you can see in Level 3, we see some bright spots. We see some improvement there. We see some improvement in Level 4. So, we're outperforming the state in Levels 3 and 4. What we'd like to see is for us to start, excuse me, outperforming students at the state in Level 5. And again, it's going to take work on our part, especially when we consider the fact, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later, but it's worth mentioning now, that we are in the midst of a new implementation for an elementary literacy program. And we are in the midst of a brand-new implementation in our K through 5 math program. And so, I expect, and then there's agreement amongst the administrators, that we're going to start to see some of those gains as we move into further years of implementation. All right, and so, here is English Language Arts, grades 9, 10, and 11. One shaded box there in Level 3. So, what does this information tell us? Tells us that we have some work to do at the high school. And I know that we have the full support of Principal Brandis and his administrative team. In fact, at the end of this, my presentation, we have an academic program to discuss with all of you that ties in nicely with Park Performance. So, let's talk about math. So, here is our mathematics performance. Now, again, we go back to comparing our performance data 2016 to 2015. And we see some bright spots at Level 3, at Level 4, and at Level 5. And so, we outperformed ourselves. Let's take a look at high school. High school, students participate in the Algebra I Park Assessment, the geometry and the Algebra II. At Level 3, we see some bright spots. But, it also tells us that we have some work to do. And one of the things that we have been talking about for quite a while, actually, is perhaps we need to provide students with more instructional time. And because we are in a block schedule, we are afforded that opportunity. So, one of the plans is that all 9th graders, and this is for next year, enrolled in an Algebra I class will have increased instructional time in Algebra I. And so, with that increased instructional time in Algebra I, what we hope will happen is that we're building the foundational skills for geometry and Algebra II, and that our bright spots will be even more next year when the students take the Park in Level 3, Level 4, and Level 5. So, we recognize the fact that we have some work to do. One of the other things that we have proposed in our budget is the purchase of new algebra books. And so, if that purchase is successful, that is something that we'll be able to do this summer and hopefully plan some professional development for our teachers to implement that new program. So, we have some work to do, and we know that. Okay, so, that covers Park. Let's make a shift now to our New Jersey Ask Science. And so, what I mentioned earlier, that Park isn't the only assessment. The state also requires that students in Grades 4 and 8 participate in the New Jersey Ask Science. And what we can see here in this chart with our most recent data in 2015-16 is that our students have outperformed the state in both general ed. So, that is the blue graph, and you're looking at the furthest graph on the right under 2015-16. And we have outperformed the state, that's the yellow bar, with our special education population. No, I'm sorry, general ed is our blue and yellow, that's the comparison. And then, our special ed is our red and green. So, you can see that we have outperformed the state. Now, if you compare the data to what we did in 2014-15, you see that there's a slight decrease. But, our numbers are still pretty high, and we've held those numbers for the past five years in science. And we're proud of that. But what we're not proud of is that slight dip. And so, we know that perhaps we need to work a little bit harder. But what I can speak to is that we recently made the transition to the Next Generation Science Standards. We have recently updated all of our curriculum maps. And one of the budget items that we have included is the purchase of new science materials to go hand-in-hand with our Next Generation Science Standards. And so, we hope that once we're able to implement those, that we'll see that increase again. Let's take a look at Grade 8. So, again, in Grade 8, you can see that we outperformed the state. That is the blue and the yellow. So, LACI is blue, the state is yellow. You can see that line is higher. That's general ed, that's our general ed population. And then, our special ed population is our red and green lines. LACI is red and the state is green. So, we're outperforming the state. But, as you can see, there is a slight dip in our performance from last year. And again, we're going to attribute that to the transition to the Next Generation Science Standards, and we hope to see that level out and perhaps increase because that's what we're hoping for. So, that's New Jersey Ask Science. And that's it for state assessments. So, let's talk about local assessments. And I mentioned that I was going to talk about that a little earlier. The Park, the New Jersey Ask, the New Jersey Biology Competency Test, it's one snapshot, one snapshot of how our students are performing. It's one day of testing. Perhaps a student was having a bad day. So, we can't rely on it solely as the true measure of how a student is doing. What we do rely on is multiple measures. And this is a list, and it's not a comprehensive list by any stretch of the imagination. It's just a snapshot of some of the other assessments that we administer in LACI. We're going to be talking about the NWA in a few minutes. But, at the elementary levels, we have the developmental reading assessments. In kindergarten, we have the New Jersey Kindergarten Entry Assessment called Teaching Standard Gold. That is a program that we piloted two years ago and full implementation this year, providing very, very valuable data to us. We also administer the San Diego Quick Reading Assessment. I'm not going to read you the list, you can see it there. But, one of the things that we're very proud of is our interventions in phonological assessments. So, that's our SIBS program. And you can see there that we have the Envision Diagnostic Tools, the ReadyGen computer-based performance assessments. And those are all available to us through our new implementation of ReadyGen and Envision Math. So, we didn't have those prior to this new implementation. Then finally, we have teacher development, teacher-developed assessments, such as tests and quizzes, that happen every day. And so, our local assessments are very, very important. It's part of that big picture that make up the true student portfolio. But let's transition to NWEA. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what NWA is. Stands for, I'm sorry, NWA MAP Assessments. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. Okay, so, MAPs are administered to all of our students, grades K through 8, in the fall and then in the spring. But I am happy to say that we have started winter administrations for reading and math in grades K through 6. So, we started that a little bit last year, but we have a full implementation going on now in grades K through 6. So, as you can see there, MAPs create this personalized assessment experience for our students. The test is intuitive, it is computer-based. And when I say intuitive, what it means is that the student starts to take the test. And if the student continues to answer correctly, the test goes on. If the student starts to answer test questions incorrectly, the test, the questions become harder, and then eventually the test stops. And that's what makes it intuitive. So, we can say that it precisely measures student progress and growth for each individual student. Not only that, but our MAP tests enable teachers to quickly and reliably assess every student's learning. But not just learning, it also allows teachers to assess growth over a one-year period. And that is a huge tool for our teachers to use with classroom instruction. The other thing about the MAP test is that it doesn't take months for the results. Typically, the results are available to students and teachers within 24 hours. And that's why we love our MAP tests. So, let's take a look at what kind of a score does a student receive with a MAP test? So, we talked about the performance levels in Park. We talked about the scale scores in New Jersey Ask, the partially proficient, proficient, and advanced proficient. But, NWA is a little bit different. So, what a student gets as a score is called a RIT. And a RIT is a score that indicates a student's instructional level. So, RIT is a scale. It actually stands for the ROSH scale. So, it's a unit scale. But when we look at exactly what the RIT tells us, it tells, it's an achievement scale. It's very accurate. It's useful for measuring growth over time. And as I mentioned, that's why the MAP scores are so important for teachers and instruction in the classroom. And the other thing that's really helpful about the RIT scale is that it's consistent, just like a ruler. Meaning that one inch is always an inch. And so, that's the accuracy part. And so, the second sentence there in the third bullet is, "A student who grows from 165 to 170 shows the same amount of instructional growth as a student who goes from 280 to 285, regardless of age or grade level." And so, it's very consistent and very accurate. So, any questions on that? Because I know when we first started administering the NWA, this was foreign to us as administrators and as teachers, and it was something that we had to learn. And I think we've done a really good job of explaining it to our parents. And by the way, in addition to our Park Night, we plan on having an NWEA night so that parents can bring their results and ask questions and perhaps look at some sample tests. So, an automated call will be sent out about that as well. So, let's take a look at some NWA data. So, we're going to start with reading. And the reason why we break it down K to 2, the K to 2 MAPs are primary MAPs. And then, in grades 3 through 8, it's just, it's a regular MAP. So, it's a little different. In order for you to make sense of this chart, I need to talk a little bit about what normative data means. So, this chart here is based on the 2015 normative data. And the data is based on K through 11 grade-level samples. Each sample is comprised of 72,000 to 153,000 student test records. And so, across 1,000 schools. And so, what we're talking about is approximately 10.2 million students across the United States are included in the normative data. And so, when you think about the enormity of that number, this data starts to make sense. And so, let's start with, let's take a look at kindergarten. So, the normative data, this is the data of what students are doing across the United States. The average RIT, the mean RIT, was 141. When our students took the NWEA in the fall of 2015, the average RIT was 142.9, which is why those boxes are shaded, which means that we are outperforming students across the United States. Same holds true in first grade, same holds true for second grade. And then, when we look at data in the fall, what we're looking at is how much growth did our students experience? And so, the normative data, I'm going to go back to kindergarten, because I don't have my pointer. Going back to kindergarten, the end-of-the-year normative data was 157.6. Our data was 162.5. We are showing more growth than students across the United States. So, we are really happy about that. Let's take a look at what our students in grades 3 through 8 are doing. So, both columns are shaded, which means that we are outperforming students across the state right through in grades 3 through 8 in reading. And we like what we see there. And so, this is why this assessment is so important. Park is important, but now when you couple our NWEA data with the other local assessments, it starts to build that portfolio, that individual student portfolio. Let's transition to language usage in grades 3 through 8. I colored that, those boxes differently, but they're shaded because we're outperforming students clear across the board, which is really, really excellent. Okay, now, we're going to transition to math. And so, what we see there is that we are outperforming students in kindergarten and second grade. But in first grade, almost. So, but those numbers still look really good. So, 162.4 in first grade was the beginning-of-the-year normative data. We scored 162. And again, 180.8, we missed it by 2 tenths of a point. So, I don't think that's anything to cry about. But again, we're good, moving towards great. And let's take a look at our NWA scores in math grades 3 through 8. We see some bright spots in the fall. And we didn't see as many bright spots in the spring. But again, as I mentioned earlier, I anticipate that that data is going to change as we transition through our first year of Envision Implementation. That concludes NWA data. We're real happy about that. And Mr. Wiggly is going to talk a little bit about SAT.
If you want to look at our SAT data over the past five years, it's a little different now moving forward because the test has changed. It's only the two-part, we're back to the two-part test. And next year, we're going to have a new baseline. So, this is basically where we finished off with the 16 test and an average over the five years of those numbers. And they're good, they could be better. But I will go back to something I've always said about the SAT in taking a high-stake, some standardized test, including AP exams, is that reach for rigor for a student who is, wants to excel, wants to go to a secondary school, has taken the college preparatory classes, and they want to take the test. Sometimes, they struggle first time around, second time around. And once they get a cut score, sometimes they'll hold there instead of pushing it to the next level. So, you'll see those numbers fluctuate a little bit. But we are looking now at next year, there will be a 17 number there. And we'll be starting with just a new, fresh-year baseline. Another test that not administered that much out here in the east is the ACT. We have a small population of kids taking that, but it's becoming more popular. But, and just another note on the SAT, it is aligned with the Common Core, and it did change format. And I call it a practice test for my SAT prep students. And then, we look at PSAT. And this goes back to also getting my students ready to get into the College Board. I think it's my jumpstart, get them jump-started into their portfolio so that their scores can match up and look at what their predictor is for on the SAT. And once again, this has been redesigned to be aligned with Park. We also look at the 9th graders enrolled in Algebra I course. And as we look at their instructional time and math performance, we can see, start to see those results on the PSAT and on their Park. So, this is a good indicator. It's great that not many, not all districts will support having the PSAT during the week. There's still weekend war- There's still weekend warriors out there doing it, and I think it's a disservice to students. So, I, once again, applaud the board for, for having students first and then funding the, the PSAT, I think it's a great benefit to our students. Oh, advanced placement scores. There you go, okay. So, I, I was once an AP coordinator way back in the day, and it's, it's an exciting, exciting program. You get to see it build and grow, and it fluctuates here at Lacey. It's expanding, our test takers are on the rise, the amount of exams we're giving are great. We look at our three, fours, and fives, and that's where people pass judgment. And like I said, I have three sons, my middle one was not a test taker. He took an AP test, but he wanted the rigor and the experience, and he got a two. He wouldn't be on this chart, but he's doing very well at a very competitive college. But the rigor of taking that test and the experience removes the label of, "I'm chasing the GPA, I just want the AP credit, and I wanna take it for the intrinsic value of taking a high-level, high-stakes test." There's no better benefit. SAT, PSAT, the Park is a feeder test, all of these assessments, they're the real world. They're going to take these tests through their career. They're gonna take these tests when they go for a job application, they have to go online and do some type of performance-based assessment for their employer. So, going through that, that rigor and having a stretch, I think is important. So, I look at that number, I'm like, "That can improve for sure." And we have some things in place here that I think are gonna really help us out. One is that we, we have the fortunate, fortunately be able to employ Mr. Cuzon as our AP Academy Leader, and he is planning, we're gonna be doing something in April on an AP Honors Night and bringing our curriculum out so that our parents can see everything and have questions and answers. So, that's still in the works. But I think the more people can be educated on what AP is and what it means to a student who's in that program and the benefits of taking the test, I think it breaks down some of the stereotypes that are behind the belief in what AP really is. And then, college acceptance. I, I used, and I was once the counseling supervisor, like, this is Chikaron, and I would always look at these numbers from year to year, and I'd say, "Oh, we only have 38 going to two-year colleges, oh, we have 41," and it would fluctuate from year to year. There's so many factors involved in that, that we can't even break that down to demographics, financials, preparation, family, moving, all of the stresses of life, that change those factors around. But they're still very good numbers, especially in our economy, which we're gonna talk about a little more, some opportunity and programs for our students. But you'll see, we still have quite a few kids going to four-year colleges, and in our two years, I would say, it's the best value in the world, especially if someone plans on transferring to a local or state school. You cannot replace it, and it prepares them really, really to succeed in a four-year college. The one goal that I will say, everything we were talking about assessment, from Park to SAT to PSAT, is something that, the data that I wanna know is, how many students are taking remedial courses at a two-year college because they weren't prepared to get there? And that's, and I'm just gonna tell you, that's universal across everywhere, that they assume that they're gonna go in there. So, the, be able to pass the AccuPlace or having a solid foundation in math and not having to take the remedial courses at a two-year or four-year school, that's the measure of college and career readiness. And I think that that should be our goal in what we're doing in all of our preparation. So, these are, this is last year's class, and we're adding some new names this year. I think there'll be some repeats up here. These are the national universities, some of the schools that are, the students went to as graduates last year. It's a great cross-section of institutions, highly competitive, competitive. I think it's a testimony to where our students are going. You look at some of the technical schools that they're going into, I think it's a reflection of some of our preparation and standard classes. And then our state universities and colleges, the bargains. In some cases, socioeconomic, people are gonna stay closer to home, not always, cheaper, just so you know, it's a lot of money in the privates, if I learned that, some endowments will help you out. But the colleges in the state, if a student, especially if they're in NJ Stars, could be quite a benefit to them.
All right, only 30 more seconds. All right, I kind of already touched upon this, and again, by no means this is a comprehensive or complete list, but what are we proud of? We're proud of a lot. We're proud of our authors, our author tonight, we're proud of our Students of the Month, we're proud of our athletes, but what are we proud of in Lacey in terms of program? So, this year, we've been hard at work at the New Jersey Achievement Coaches Grant, led by District Supervisor Michelle Amos. Huge strides we're making, huge comparisons that we're making, two-part performance, NWA performance, and I see Holly, one of our teachers, who's one of our teachers who were trained in the, the Achievement Coaches Grant. So, we're really excited about what we're doing there. Again, the implementation of a comprehensive literacy and mathematics materials and assessments program in grades K through five, and I have to thank District Supervisor Ann Taylor for heading out our Ready Gen implementation, it was too long, our two years to get there, but we got there, and the implementation has been a huge success so far. Multiple levels of literacy interventions, I talked about SIPs earlier, more interventions than I think Lacey has implemented in a very long time, much needed. And in a few moments, I'm going to turn the floor over to a guest speaker that we have this evening, along with Mr. Brandis, to talk about the High School College Academy. A few months ago, Mr. Dowd, our STEM Principal at the high school, presented on the High School Leadership Humanities Academy, we're also very excited about that, and of course, extended STEM opportunities for not only middle school students, but for high school students. And so, you're starting to hear that word "academy" a lot, and it's very intentional. So, it's a perfect transition to this conversation. So, back in the 2014, 2015 school year, we started what we call the Lacey Township High School Ocean County College Academy. And there, there's our enrollment numbers, and these are the courses that we offer through this academy. And our numbers are fluctuating a little bit, but they're holding steady. And I suspect that after tonight's presentation, when we talk about the expansion of that program, there's gonna be even more interest. But let me just show you a little bit about what the College Academy is right now, as it's happening. So, right now, our high school seniors, they get this jump on a college education. So, right now, our seniors who participate in all of the courses offered through this program will graduate with not only a high school transcript and diploma, they will also graduate with 18 college credits from Ocean County College. And so, this is a perfect segue for us to continue this awesome, awesome conversation. And with that, I'd like to introduce Principal Brandis again, and his guest speaker, Dr. Jackson from Ocean County College, to come on up.
You can have a stretch real quick if you want.
We had a lengthy presentation because we knew it was gonna be a snow day tomorrow, so...
Oh, is that a fact?
Thank you. I'm here to speak to you tonight with Dr. Jackson about an exciting opportunity we have about our Lacey OCC College Academy. Like Dr. Clark just said, we established in 2014, we offered two senior students, six courses where they were able to earn 18 credits of dual enrollment here at the high school, earning OCC again, credit. Briefly, we talked about going back to the Jobs, Job Career Fair that Ms. Frazee was talking about, and the celebration of that, how great it was for Ocean County and this ever-changing world of 21st century education. Lacey Township High School and the Ocean County College aren't even evolving, but are leading the way in these changes for an education for our children. So, we're very excited to talk to you a little bit about that. The expansion on those 16 credits, beginning with the class of 2019, our juniors who are taking AP courses right now, earning credits, college credits, are now going to be able to expand our academy from 18 credits to 64 college credits that they could earn up to at the end of their senior year. With this opportunity, they would be able to earn their Associate Liberal Arts degree from Ocean County College and walk across their stage before they receive a high school diploma. And this is really a remarkable opportunity for the Lacey Township students, our children of Lacey Township. No other school in Ocean County is gonna be able to offer that opportunity to their children besides Lacey coming out in the 2017 school year. Junior year, the opportunity to earn 30 college credits will be there, and in the senior year, they'll have an opportunity to earn 34 for a total of 64 credits. This is what the mapping looks like. The most important thing we need to understand about this is the dual certification of our faculty, where in their junior year, just about all their courses will be taken here at Lacey Township High School, taught by Lacey Township teachers that have already been employed here. They're dual-certified, they have such high credentials, masters in their area, that they are also proved to be adjunct teachers at Ocean County College. This dual enrollment for the fall semester would look like a first-year experience, computer literacy, small business, history course, and they would take their high school regular courses of English, math, oral language, and their physical education. They would transfer now to the second semester of Lacey Township High School at Ocean County College with a school and community course, another technology course, hospitality, history course in ELA. At the end of the spring, when normally the Ocean County College semester ends, they have their, beginning of their summer course, where a very unique opportunity will be able to give to our students, where we'll have a teacher, a Lacey Township High School teacher accompany them to Ocean County College where they can receive courses instructed by an OCC adjunct professor. So, getting a little bit of that taste of what it's like to be on a college campus. Again, it would be 30 credits in their junior year. And understanding this just didn't take place overnight, it's been an evolution, the drafts that went into this, the collaboration amongst the administrative team at the high school and with the Dr. Jackson at Ocean, at the college, was really a lot of hard work that went into it, it was a collaborative effort. Main contributor to that was Ms. Chikaron, the head of our guidance department, and Mr. Zalinski, our seven through 12 supervisors, had a lot of input through this entire process along with the rest of the administration. And certainly, again, could not, would have been done without Dr. Jackson's help at the college level. Senior year, they'll be taking their English requirements in dual enrollment. In the fall, they'll be taking English I, math, they'll have survey and math, which is, these are more of the requirements that they will need for their liberal arts degree. We'll be able to offer a bio course, general bio here at Lacey Township High School, and some additional OC classes, which we have the flexibility, again, this will be for the following year, to either bring an OCC instructor here, have a hybrid course, where there could be an OCC instructor online and a Lacey teacher facilitating that information. So, there are a lot of options within this program. Again, and then, at this point, they would be able to, again, take two summer courses. There's a lot of flexibility within this schedule, there's gonna be a lot of support from our staff and our teachers, our guidance department, and certainly administration as well. Couple benefits as well to the Lacey OCC Academy experience. Again, classes are taught by LTHS teachers who can serve as adjunct instructors. Their credits count towards high school and towards college. Students will gain valuable experience by taking college-level courses, gives them the feel, again, these are our college-bound students, gaining a remarkable opportunity to see what it's like to take college courses with the support of our staff. Strength of transcript is one of the top reasons for this college acceptance. Dr. Jackson, I know is gonna be speaking a little bit about that and what it looks like for their future beyond getting this liberal arts associate's degree. Again, support by our staff, no commuting, unless their senior year, they may have some options to do so. And one of the biggest things is the affordability and the cost of doing this College Academy here at Lacey. Here's a, just an example of a cost analysis and the benefits. Because of OCC giving us the jumpstart rate, if you can see the column of LTHS and OCC College Academy, this 2017 school year, those juniors will be able to take up to 30 credits at a jumpstart rate of $92.50. And then their senior year, be able to take 34 credits for a total of $4,928 to gain their liberal arts associate's degree. Okay, a remarkable opportunity for our students here at Lacey Township High School and, and our children. If they wait, if they graduate Lacey and go to OCC, you can see the cost would be $8,580. If they go, let's say, to Stockton, don't take any classes their junior year at Lacey, they would be getting around estimated $9,720 per year. Going down, if you look at the cost, it'd be $13,512. That is just in credits alone. So, if your child decides to go to Stockton for room and board, that will be an additional cost to them or an additional savings if they take advantage of this College Academy between Lacey and OCC. Again, those numbers go up when we look at Rowan, NJIT, or like Mr. Wiggly said, if you go into those private institutions, those, those savings compound. I'm very excited to, again, have Lacey Township High School lead this endeavor, certainly along with Dr. Jackson and OCC, because certainly without his put and the work of the collaborative team here at the high school, this endeavor would not be possible. So, thanks to the team, and I'd like to present Dr. Jackson from, from OCC.
Thank you very much for having me, Greg. Can we go back to the junior year? Thank you much, so much for having me. I'm Dr. Jackson, I'm the Executive Director of Academic Success at Ocean County College. I oversee the embedded courses, the courses that you already offer here at Ocean, family at Lacey Township High School. I also oversee a couple of grants, the College Readyness Now grant, and also the College Pen and Now grant, which you also, we're working with you, both of those grants. But the program that we created, and I must say "we" because this has been a collaborative process throughout, this isn't something that OCC came to Lacey and saying, "Here, we want you to do this." This was a conversation between myself, Mr. Brandis, Ms. Chikaron, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Zalinski, and, and really putting our heads together and coming up with this. And I can tell you, the success of this piece of paper right here has sprung up seven to eight more institutions in Ocean County wanting to do the same thing. So, this is a very big project. I mentioned this at a superintendent's roundtable with Mr. Wiggly, I mean, Mr. Wiggly messed up everybody. Mr. Wiggly, I'm excited, I'm just so excited, man. I can't believe this is about to happen. And, and Mr. Wiggly was there, and several superintendents from other schools came right up to me and said, "Hey, we're interested in doing this." I got calls from Brick Town, Brick Memorial, Point Beach, Point Barrel, so everyone is excited. Excellent thing though is, as I said, you guys are first. You guys are coming out the box first. And again, this first year, and the reason why this junior year is set up like this is because we wanna offer every student in the 11th grade the opportunity to be in this program. All the courses you see up here, this fall, spring, and that May-June summer session, are all courses that do not require any prerequisites, meaning your, your child can come in and take any of these courses right off the bat. So, we don't wanna restrict it early, and then if you go to the senior year... Thank you. In the senior year, you see those courses with the story, the English 151, the math 151, those courses have prerequisite requirements. So, in the junior year, we're gonna be working with your students to also get them college and career ready for those classes. Those students who aren't ready, we'll be working in that junior year with the support that Principal Brandis talked about, with support from OCC, you have another transition program, you can talk to the school about, really trying to help them be successful as possible. That's our goal. And our other goal is to work with Lacey Township High School. Again, we are not coming in saying, "This is what needs to be done." We allow them this liberal arts program, it gives students more freedom to select courses, it's much more transferable than a general studies program. It's much more transferable than a general studies program or a business academy program. These courses that you see here are courses that students will take wherever they went in the United States for their first two years of high, I'm sorry, first two years of college. So these are courses that offer them more flexibility when they're transferring, more flexibility when they go on, if they do continue on to the four-year university before they come, after they finish the OCC. And then also, within this program, we're also making this program an accredited program. Working with the National Association for Competing in Dual Enrollment Partnerships, they set, and they're going to work with us to make sure we are doing what we say we're going to do, and we're doing it with high standards in mind. Academic standards, required pre-curriculum standards, teaching standards, all these standards. So we'll be working closely with the teachers and the faculty involved in this program. We'll have mentors in Ocean County College that comes down. Lacy's also looking to provide support teachers here, a counselor that will be very focused on this particular program. She or she will be working directly with these students. So again, we want to make this the best product possible. This is not something we just kind of throw together and say, "Hey, guys, here, you know, this is our program, good luck, hope you have fun." No, we want this to be a model program. Throughout our conversation, that's what continuously came up. We want this to be a model program for other institutions, and by God, it has been. Thank you, Lacy. And then, and again, as we said, if the students go to this program and go through this program, at the minimum, or at the minimum, if they are involved in this college academy, they will have their freshman year done of college, at minimum. At maximum, they can leave, they can leave Lacy Township, they graduate with their associate's degree in liberal arts before they get their high school diploma.
Any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Billwell. So if I'm, so if I'm a graduating senior and I'm applying to, let's say, Rutgers University after completing this program, am I applying as a transfer student? Or am I applying as a incoming freshman, but making the ware, in the same way that our dual enrollment program works now, where you're asking them to give you credit for existing courses you're taking?
You would be, you would be transferring as a transfer student. Because you will have your first two, if you do the entire program, so if you left the sixty-four credits, you would have your freshman and sophomore year done at the college level, and you will be transferring into Rutgers as a junior.
So I know you know this, but everybody else should know this. Transferring the acceptance rate into a school like a Rutgers or you name a school on a transfer is much, much easier than going in as a freshman. So not only are you saving thousands, thousands of dollars, you also have the ability to get into a better school easier. And that is my second follow-up question.
And just one more point to what you just said. Also, if a student left with these sixty-four credits and transferred to any university in New Jersey, that university has to accept all sixty-four college credits. So if you went to Rutgers, Rutgers would have to accept by law, this is not me saying this, this is a law, the Latin law requires them to accept all sixty-four credits. Now, how they divvy them up is another thing, but they must accept all sixty-four.
That's great. That was my second question.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned some things about accreditation, right? So all the schools that you use as examples where you're here as a base schools. Say you have someone that wants to go to University or someone to Stanford. How many of these credits could potentially transfer, or would they all transfer?
They should all transfer. They should all transfer. The way we designed this program and the way I designed this program and working with your team here is really looking at institutions like that. That's kind of my standard. I actually, I went to Columbia University, so I have like a standard that I looked at. I kind of go like, "What if the student was going to Harvard?" Right? I know, and some students may. So then I try to build a program based on this student going to Harvard, right? So everything you see here would be able to transfer to whatever institution they're planning on going to. And if not, and if we know, let's say, if we know that this eleventh- to fourth grader is going to University of Arizona, then we can begin to look at University of Arizona's courses that they would need and begin to plug those courses into this program. And again, that's the, that's the beauty of this being a liberal arts program, it has flexibility. These courses are not locked in. Let's say, next year, they come back and say, "You know what? We didn't like those courses. We want to do these courses." We can easily switch them around and insert new courses into the program.
We've also, we've also had students who come out of our eighteen credits we do now. One of the big things that they do is they slow themselves down, because the requirements before you agree would be pretty rigorous, right? So instead of eighteen, twenty-one credits, they're taking twelve credits, fifteen credits. They allow them, slow them down a little bit so that they're not so intense. They can work, they can commute a little bit easier. So, and we had many girls, and guys that came last year and came back and said, "Wow, thank God I took those eighteen credits and slowed myself up a little bit, because it was so intense."
And the beauty of this is that these courses are dual enrollment. What that means is they're taking high school credits and college credits at the same time. So all these courses meet the state graduation requirement for high school. So they're not taking our OCC college courses and then having to go back and take high school courses. When they take one of these courses, it equals the high school courses they need to take to meet the graduation. Yes, sir.
Just curious, excellent program. I'm just curious, something to break down in the tuition costs. Is there any benefit to the school or to these accredited teachers that are teaching this?
We're giving you the regular jumpstart rate. The only benefit for your teachers is that now we're going to be working closely with them, collaborating, so they will have mentors for the, for the teachers who will be teaching this program. We'll be meeting with them regularly, talking to them. You guys have become a candidate school, so you have some of the software and learning management systems that we already had in place. So it really is almost seamless. Like I said, in terms of the rate, you know, the jumpstart rate is the lowest rate. We are, we would work with students who might need some financial help. There's also various payment plans that families and parents can get on as far as the rate that's up to.
Our teachers don't receive any extra compensation?
Oh, no, 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 no extra compensation.
Is the school receiving any compensation at all?
Well, the way it works is, because the professor who's teaching is hired by OCC but is working here, your school will receive money somehow. I don't know how it works.
Yeah, we receive, we receive the adjunct rate.
Right. When I was a Dean, I had a, I had a pool of money.
When he goes to the general fund, our teachers don't get any extra compensation because they already won.
Right. But I had a pool of money that this large amount would disappear and dose wear and, oh, that's for the district. So there is money somewhere out there, but it's no, you know, no extra money for the professors. If they do, however, come to OCC and become a professor there, that's an opportunity for them to make extra money, being a part-time adjunct professor in that way. But in terms of making money off of this and doing things in terms of that, there's no, not a lot of money.
There's no cost or no additional cost to the district.
The one thing, though, that is good is the fact that the faculty now can become professors. That, that means a lot, especially in that.
You may retain some teachers, you know, by instituting the courses. Do you also want to share that you're working on a plan where we receive jumpstart rate for all classes?
Yes.
Not just, because right now we're only getting two.
Our, an important part is our seniors, our seniors who are looking to, they might not be able to take full advantage of the sixty-four credits we now offer for junior and senior year, but those seniors right now will be able to take any of the college courses, OCC dual enrollment courses that we offer. And now they will all be at the benefit of the jumpstart rate of ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, as opposed to they would have to pay the full rate after two courses previously.
It's about one forty-two.
About one forty-two. So there's additional, additional savings and opportunities for our seniors as well, not just our juniors.
And also, the unique thing about the senior year, if you look, this last column over here to the left, the May-June, because your seniors will still be in high school, they will still get the jumpstart rate. So until they graduate, they're considered a high school student. And we offer a five-week program from May to June while you all are still in. So when those students start the program, they'll be considered high school seniors, and they will get a lower rate. And then after they graduate, they will go back to the normal rate. So we designed it purposefully so that we can capture those that last year and get, and allow those seniors to still be considered jumpstart while they're taking this program. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, what Mr. Brandeis said, the seniors, next-year seniors, will be able to take these courses? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, be able to take any of these courses that we're offering to the juniors or seniors, correct?
So they'll do thirty or thirty-four credits is the most I can think of.
Yes, yes, yep.
We're just going to say they have to take the part to take the course.
Yes, yes. We made that. And actually, I actually had a lot to do with the part test. I was actually only there as a committee member for this test.
I'm a bad test.
No, it's not bad test. I'll create it out.
We appreciate, thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Do we plan on doing like a newspaper article?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're presenting at Ocean County College. And also, there's going to be an informant, informative night, the information night, just like our AP course, course night, they're going to also be doing an academy.
I'm just going to forget to tell them the board member.
Yes. We're going to take a two-minute break, and let some people use the rest of it as we come out of the room. So quick stretch, real quick.
Thanks for that, two minutes.
Two, three.
All right, we're going to continue with the meeting. Thank you for the great presentation before we get our program rolling out. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. George to provide a statement on the ten of the budget.
Thanks, Mr. Wiggly. Good evening, everyone. As it is presented this evening, the tentative general fund budget for 2017, 2018 is about half a million dollars or point eight percent more than the approved budget for this current 2016, 2017 school year. Due largely to the fact that the district received zero increase in state aid, the revenue side of the budget is supported by a two percent increase in the general fund property tax levy. While it is still an increase, it is noted that it is three point four percent lower of an increase than the increase of five point four percent in this current 2016, 2017 school year. And when the thirteen point seven percent reduction in the debt service portion of the tax levy is taken into consideration, the net increase on the property tax levy as it stands now for next year is point eight percent. That translates to about forty dollars for the average household for the next school year, and if you're a tax penny person, that is point zero four pennies. Contractual obligations and projected increase in the cost of health benefits weighs heavily on the expenditure appropriation side of our budget. And these factors are offset in part by the elimination of some staff positions due through attrition and absorption. The public hearing on the final 2017, 2018 budget will take place here on April 24th. Between now and then, we will continue to explore for alternative sources of revenue as well as ways to further reduce appropriations. That's all I have, Mr. Wiggly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. George. Come up with the reports. Our suspension report and our fire report are submitted on time. We are good. And I just had, real quick, about Red Night Out. It was a wonderful night, Friday night, last Friday night, the outpouring of support from our staff, our community, our student performances, our PSA that's out there on video right now, our drama students and our dancing students presented in the auditorium, it was outstanding. Really made some connections into the community, since we are all, whether we are connected directly or not, part of the community and the region and the state and the country that's struggling with the problems of addiction. Our students in our ADA program, NHS, our faculty volunteers, our administrators, our board members present was really, it was very powerful and was a great night. It's kind of like you want to do it every Friday night, because it was, I know it was quite a party in the gymnasium, but the somber stories were somewhat enlightening in the auditorium. I think if we continue to do that, we'll start to continue the conversation amongst ourselves. So I thought that was a great night.
Okay. Now I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Seeing no hands, I'm going to close the floor for public comment, move on to board comment. Just move from my right to the left, Ms. DeSantis.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to our seniors of the month, Justin Frazi and Alexia Bove, and congratulations to unsung hero Emily Dorsey, very hard-working students. On February 22nd, Family Literacy Night was celebrated at Lenoka Harbor School. There was a classroom set up for reading around a campfire. Many lovely written assignments were posted on the walls for all to see and read. On Thursday, February 23rd, there was Family Literacy Night at the Forkett River School. Over three hundred and fifty students attended with parents and grandparents. The librarian had all their new books from their James Patterson grant on display. Then at 6:00 PM, I went to the high school for the science fair. There were many intriguing projects. Congratulations to all the award winners. From the high school, I went to the Relay for Life kickoff party at Mill Pond School. It was well-attended. Please consider joining or supporting a team. The Berkeley-Lacy Relay for Life will be held May 20th and 21st at Veterans Park in Berkeley Township. On Saturday, February 25th, the Cedar Creek Coach Bingo was very well-attended, and I can't thank all the parents and staff enough that put this huge event together. It is the major fundraiser for the Cedar Creek PTA. On February 27th, there was a talent show at the high school. It was a great success. It was wonderful to see and hear all the hidden talent some of our students have. On February 28th, the Rotary Club and the Interact Club hosted the Wizards basketball game. It was extremely well-attended. I believe there were hundreds of people there. Everyone had a lot of fun, since it's both a comedy show and a basketball game. Wednesday, March 1st, was the very first job and career fair held at the high school. Kudos to Jackie Frazi, who began the framework for this event. And thank you also to Julie Chickaron and all the staff that helped put this worthwhile event together for the students. On March 2nd, it was Dr. Seuss's birthday and Read Across America Day. I spent some time at Cedar Creek School, reading to kindergarten and fourth-grade students. I was honored to participate in this special celebration of reading. Friday night, March 3rd, I attended the middle school play, Finian's Rainbow. What a great show. The singing and dancing was very professional. Congratulations to all the students and staff. We had a curriculum meeting on Monday, March 6th. There were lots of new programs and classes coming soon to the high school. Stay tuned for the new opportunities. This associate's degree program with OCC presents a huge savings for those that want to save college dollars and then graduate even faster with a bachelor's degree right after high school. On Tuesday, March 7th, I attended the Ocean County School Board meeting in Lakewood. New legal and ethics decisions were discussed by Mr. Carl Tanksley, an attorney at the NJSPA. Thursday, March 9th, I attended an ADA presentation at Cedar Creek School. Then in the evening, I went to the fourth-grade choral concert, Pirates, at Lenoka Harbor School. It was a great show. Red Night Out, Friday, March 10th. The turnout was excellent in spite of the weather. And thank you to all who spoke, our staff, and all the people on the Lacy Township Municipal Alliance that worked so hard to bring this event together. We must do all we can to raise and educate a drug-free community. This is one of the reasons I wear red. It's a reminder, we are all responsible for raising and educating a drug-free community. And now to continue with Mrs. McAvoy's spotlight on Lacy graduates. David Gordon from the Lacy High School class of 2011. David attended Lycoming College and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. And prior to graduating with honors, David was awarded the Hayburger Fellowship to conduct original research on the relationship between terrorism and the media. His findings were presented at the Midwest Political Science Association's annual conference in Chicago in 2015. Currently, David is a project coordinator at Edison Research in Somerville, New Jersey. He currently works on the team that conducts the national exit polls on election night for all of the major news networks in the national election pool, including CNN, NBC, ABC, CBS, Fox, and the Associated Press. Sounds like a very interesting line of work. Thank you to all in attendance here tonight. I would like to ask the public to please consider serving your community as a school board member. This is a volunteer position. We re- This is a volunteer position, we receive no compensation. It's very easy to fill out the petition, they can be obtained from the county clerk in Toms River. The deadline to file for this November is July thirty-first, according to the calendar on the Ocean County Clerk's website. And our next business meeting and the public hearing on the budget will be Monday, April twenty-fourth, one week later than usual due to the spring break. Thank you.
Mr. Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everyone that was honored here, Student of the Month, sports, specifically Zoe, very impressive, got her a little commercial, hope everyone buys the book, it's going to a good cause, and a very, very nice thing that she does, and she should be very honored. Here's the book. Now I just lost my train of thought, but anyway, I also attended the Red Night Out and the Career Fair, and both very good showings, and I'm glad they're gonna be, continue throughout the years. This, Dr. Jackson, the, anyone that was involved in Lacy's School Board of Ed, Administration, this is something to be proud of. Social media knocks down Lacy Township Schools a lot, on the programs, teachers, academics, but this is something that should be noted, hopefully it's a buzz on social media tomorrow and days in the future, but this is something that we all could be proud of. Hopefully it's not snowing out there, I didn't get a chance to look, but if we do get hit with the snow, I hope everyone stays safe tomorrow, stay home, be safe, stay warm, and that's all I have.
Ms. Downing.
Hey, I too would like to congratulate our Students of the Month, sorry, I have to use my glasses, Alexia and Justin for a fine job, and to our unsung hero Emily, fine students, I will repeat what Ms. DeSensa said, fine students, and as always, they just impress me when you bring these students in front of us. I'd like to congratulate too, Coach Mahar and the female bowling team, great job, and wrestling team, the wrestlers, Luke, Luke, Matt, and Hunter, more importantly, I was so impressed by the grade point average in addition to all they do for their wrestling, so great job. I also would like to commend the, Mrs. Chikarone and Ms. Frazi for putting together the Career Day and Job Fair, it is so important for careers, our students have to know what's out there, and a lot of times, just going to find a job is a hassle in itself, so to have everything right here for them to apply, great job. I was listening to the seniors talk tonight about the things that they're planning, and oh my gosh, this year is flying so quickly, before you know it, we're gonna be on the graduation field watching them graduate. Red Night Out, I was so impressed, when I pulled up at the parking lot, I thought there was a basketball game going on as well as Red Night Out, but it was all for Red Night Out. I want to congratulate all those that had a hand in planning Red Night Out, the speakers were fabulous, the whole evening was fabulous, and Mr. Bidwell and I walked over to the gym to see what the students were up to, and it was so planned, Mrs. Rineska was there, there was a magician, there were dogs, it was a really well-planned-out night, and I hope that if you didn't get to go this year, that the next time we have Red Night Out, you'll be able to participate because it was phenomenal, good job. Let's see what else, oh, Zoe. As an elementary teacher and a love for reading, I was just, I was sitting here with tears in my eyes, watching her publishing a book at age eleven, just so impressive, and children at that age and younger have such a creativity, their, their minds are always going, and it's, I wish more students would have the opportunity to publish their work because there's so many talented authors out there. Remember, if you'd like to order her book, it's Lulu dot com, L-U-L-U dot com, and the proceeds she said went to where?
St. Jude.
St. Jude, so think about, not only is she talented as an author, she's got a part of both, so thank you Zoe for being who you are, and I hope your students look up to you and try and do what you're doing as well. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, President Bidwell, we're at that stage of the evening where redundancy becomes, so I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm trying not to repeat myself, but you know, Justin, Alexia, and Emily, Penn State, University of Vermont, and I know Emily wants to study veterinary medicine, certainly that's gonna be a fine institution that she attends, so congratulations to them for being role models to their fellow students and fine representatives for the community. The women's bowling team, the men's bowling team, the wrestling team, congratulations to you on your performances this season, as Mrs. Downing pointed out, I think you saw a nice blend of academics as well as athletic talent, and it's, it's so important when you hear about these grade point averages and what these students are achieving in the classroom, but also what they're achieving in regards to athletic excellence in their field of play, so that's, that's really exciting. Zoe, Zoe Rose, what, what can already be said, what can't be said that's already been said, you know, you gave the plug again, but to see an eleven-year-old girl get up there and be so accomplished in publishing literary work, it's just, it's, it's incredible, so congratulations to her. The Career Fair, the Job Readiness Fair, I think that's a great thing that we've started, and I hope we continue that, so congratulations to everyone that was involved in putting that together. The OCC and Lacy Academy, just, what a great program, what a great program to be able to offer our students, members of this community, to be able to graduate high school with an associate's degree and have the opportunity to provide significant savings to your parents, I think is a great thing, and it provides these students with a wonderful opportunity, so great job to everybody that had a part in, in making that happen. You know, I'll just touch on one more thing, and I wasn't gonna say this tonight, but I think, Nick, you said something, a lot of people go on social media and talk without fact, and I think it's very important that we all, we, we base our decisions off of fact. People should come out here and be involved, you know, Mr. DeSensa mentioned, you just fill out a paper and you can come and you can run for one of these seats. If you truly want to get involved, if you truly want to be part of something special and be part of the change and the good things that are happening in Lacy, you gotta come out and get involved. It's really easy to sit behind a keyboard and, and kinda poo-poo on things, but these people up here, this, this administration, this staff, as well as the teachers that we have, are doing a wonderful job, and we're gonna continue to improve and make things better at Lacy Township, so with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Claus.
Everything he said. Now, you know what, I, I do wanna say, you know, congratulations to the Students of the Month and the athletes, I was really impressed with the four-oh. Wrestling is a, an active sport that takes a lot of time and a lot of practice, so to be able to put all that effort into the sport and still walk away with a four-oh or a four-two, that's incredible, so they should be very proud of themselves, and the parents too. Zoe, it's awesome, like Sean said, there's not a whole lot more you can say, but I'll buy the book. And the, the OCC Lacy thing, when I read that, I just thought, wow, where was it a couple years ago, so my daughter could've done it, but I just think, to walk away from high school with an associate's, and to be the first ones in Ocean County to be able to do it, you know, that's something that separates us from the other people. You always look for that thing that separates you, makes you better, and that's all one right there, so I think that was an awesome job. That's it.
Well, fortunately, as being the last guy to go, everybody usually steals my thunder as we go along, so I'm gonna try and pull out some stuff that we didn't talk about a little bit, and I'll be brief because I know everybody's tired and ready to go home and avoid the snow. Red Night Out, so I went to Red Night Out, and one of the things that I really, really took home from that, and I don't remember if it was Mr. Wigley or if it was somebody from the Municipal Alliance, but basically they said, our, our town is no different than any other town. Every other town has the same problems we have. Every other town has kids that are doing heroin, every other town has kids that are going out and drinking and driving, but what's different about this town is that we talk about it and we do stuff about it, and so we get a lot of criticism sometimes for things like middle school random drug testing, high school random drug testing. We've recently bought alcohol breath, breathalyzers to use at events, and I guess what I would say to you is, we can all stick our heads in the sand and pretend it's not happening, but that's not gonna fix the problem. And so from Red Night Out, that was what I really took away, and I, I don't recall who said it, but whoever did, it was very, very well said. Zoe, I mean, you know, we've all said it, but I gotta say her name again, go to Lulu dot com and buy one book, buy one book. She was amazing. Lacy Ocean County Community College Academy, the thing that came arose, came out of this for me is, we're taking steps each and every year, every month, to remove excuses and reasons why our kids can't go to college. This is just another reason, another example of, there is no excuse. You can do it right here while you're going to high school, and it won't cost you anywhere near what it'll cost you to go to a private school, a public school, even a county college once you graduate here. So again, I appreciate the fact that, that our staff and our district are taking steps to not just promote going to college, but making it a reality, making it easy to happen. And last but not least, as you probably all know by now, we just recently called off school for tomorrow, but if there is no snow, we were the last ones to call off school. We were the last ones.
Mr. Bidwell, I'm still waiting.
Oh, you still haven't gotten it.
We haven't gotten it.
All right, second to last. And with that, I'm gonna move on to the regular meeting, quickly. For new business, can I take a motion for items A through O? Is that a Q?
I think it's a Q.
I think it's a, I think it's an O. LMN.
Twenty-four, if you can move it.
No.
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 Move.
Mr. Miranda, move. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes on all with an exception on item D, nay on item two-six-oh-five-two-seven, and I would like to abstain on item F, and it's not for conflict.
Thank you. Ms. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Hey, I'm gonna vote no on A through D, F and K, and yes on the remainder.
On A through, I'm sorry?
A through D.
Uh-huh.
F, K, and then yes E through O.
Thank you. Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes on all with the exception of L, since as of tomorrow, we're going to be revising that again. Moving on to donations, I, I have to quickly redo this list just because of the amount of appreciation we have. For Cedar Creek School, Mrs. Patty Naden donated Dr. Seuss books in the amount of fifty dollars. Forkett River School, the Molucco family, used clarinets, four hundred dollars. Forkett River School PTA, combination of two donations for thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Mrs. Erickson, a gift basket for two hundred dollars. Goddard School, Mrs. Cooney gift basket for seventy-five dollars. A Sweet Memory, I seem to be on the line, Ivory Cottage Gifts gift basket, seventy-five dollars. Anthony's Pizza Grill gift certificate's worth thirty dollars. Dr. Rob Thompson, yet again, gift, gift basket, two hundred and fifty dollars. Lacy Car Wash Quick Loop gift certificates for a hundred and fifty dollars. Mill Pond School PTA breakout EDU kits, two hundred and fifty dollars. Shop Right for grocery bags, forty-five dollars. At the high school, Dress Me Up, tuxedos, ties, and suits, forty-five hundred dollars, thank you very much. Michelle Roselle, closing shoes and jackets for five hundred dollars, and the U.S. B.C. Bowling Association, check for boys bowling for a hundred dollars, seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five thousand total. Can I have a motion to accept these donations?
No.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Miranda.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes, and thank you to everyone.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Claus.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Moving on to three programs in curriculum, can I have a motion for items A through...
Six.
Eight, eh, eight through C.
Yes, move.
Second.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes, and please bring home some trophies.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes, professional days, can I have a motion?
No.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Certificated personnel, items A through H.
Move. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes, and I noted some typos in item A, I hope they've been fixed.
They have.
Thank you.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
I have to abstain on Vanessa P. Clark, and I vote no on Patrick DeGeorge, not because personal reasons, but because of, I feel, hasn't been here long enough for a raise yet.
Okay, Mrs. Downing, I mean, Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. Supported non-certificated staff personnel, items A through E.
No.
Second.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. And do we have any add-ons?
I have, I have two add-on motions. The first motion is to move that the board approve the extension of the suspension of student number nine-zero-zero-eight-three-seven until the next regular board education meeting held on April twenty-four, two thousand seventeen.
Do we have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Okay, I ask the board to move that the board approve the extension of the suspension of student number one-eight-zero-zero-four-five until the next regular board education meeting on April twenty-four, two thousand seventeen.
Do we have a motion?
Second. Anybody?
Second.
Sean and Rob.
Thank you. Roll call. Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes. I have a motion to close the meeting.
Move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Everybody be safe.